All right, so good afternoon, everyone. We are approaching 2:30 now, so we will get started with our hearing that I think most of you are mostly concerned with today, which is around trash and recycling. And so I want to thank Council President Scott in terms of his leadership and raising this issue that's affecting all of us and all of our city council districts and every citizen across Baltimore. So again, I thank you for your leadership. Before going to Council President Scott, I do want to recognize leadership as well. So we did also recognize Director Garbach before, but also want to note that John Chalmers is also on with us along with Janelle Mummy. We also have Kristin Oldendorf joining us, Day Marsha Collins as well. And I also see that Kim Humphrey is joining us from HR. So again, thank you all for the work you're doing, but I do want to kick it over to Council President Scott for a few comments. So thank you, Council President Scott, for joining us today.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for having this most important hearing. I want to start off by saying, extending a huge thank you to all of our solid waste workers who are working tirelessly amidst a global health pandemic, doing a job that many wouldn't do before a global health pandemic and who are working extremely hard, a triple as hard in some, in many cases, to try to make sure that the service is net for the citizens of Baltimore. Also, I'd like to thank DPW for extending ours to the collection pickup sites and adding in addition, collection centers to some of our districts and workers. We know this hasn't been an easy year for DPW with the stress of the pandemic and the loss of a coworker who unfortunately passed away. These times are extremely challenging for many Baltimoreans, the weeks of disruptions to residential trash and recycle. I think pickup is an inconvenience. I'm frustrated that we continue to have these struggles amidst, and this is a problem that predates the pandemic. Even as we navigate these challenging unprecedented circumstances, the city has to find a way to complete its most basic responsibilities on behalf of our constituents, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to find a way to do so. I've been out within the community, helping folks with trash and pickup and recycling, standing alongside our hard workers, helping them clean alleys and do all the things that we know that they need support of. I truly appreciate the hard work of our workers and look forward to continuing to support and work alongside them as we continue to clean up Baltimore and come to a permanent solution to this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to a healthy discussion today.
Thank you again, Council President Scott. I know we have members of the committee who represented it, and I know we all have questions and concerns. But at this point, I do want to provide an opportunity for DPW, your representatives, to present to us, and then we'll follow your lead from this point. So again, I'll open it up to DPW for some initial comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Matt Garbach. I'm the Acting Director of the Department of Public Works. And I want to thank you and you, Mr. President, and Vice Chairman Schleifer for holding this hearing and for having us come and talk to you about some of the challenges and issues we've been facing. It is most definitely an important topic, and I share your frustration that we are not where we should be or where I want us to be. And I assure you, we've been actively pursuing solutions that we can find ways to stabilize and support our routine collection services. As you mentioned, COVID really hit us both directly and indirectly, and we've been feeling those impacts pretty substantially. If faced one of these issues or a couple of these issues, you know, we'd be fine, but so many different issues at once. It's almost like death by a thousand cuts, and it was just too much to handle. The increased tonnage along with employees out on quarantine, anxiety about collecting trash during a pandemic, the time added to shifts for distributing personal protective equipment and maintaining social distancing when clocking in and out, as well as the oppressive heat combined to create a truly untenable situation. So daily staffing shortages began increasing throughout July and into August, which caused us to struggle to complete trash and recycling routes. Solid waste and recycling collections is a very people-driven activity that relies on crews composed of a CDL driver and two laborers. Because our workers are in the community every day, we must take precautions to protect them from potential exposure to COVID. It's mandatory that all workers wear masks and practice social distancing to the extent that that is possible. And this is all regardless of the climate or the environmental conditions. We've worked hard to start each collection day with sufficient crews to handle all the routes, but circumstances change each and every day. A fewer available crews and drivers working unfamiliar routes compounded the challenges to complete these daily tasks. And yet, our crews have worked well into the night to complete the routes only to report to work in the early hours of the next morning to tackle what remained from the day before. It's this variability in the daily challenges that made it difficult for DPW to communicate exactly when and where crews would be at a given time and estimate when a particular route or location would be completed. The backlog of recycling routes continued to grow until it took many days, if not a full week, to make up the missed routes. So all these factors led to the decision to implement the current continuity of services plan. And that entails assigning all collection crews to trash collection so that we can stay on schedule, and it modifies recycling collection to a temporary community drop-off model. So as I mentioned, the Bureau of Solid Waste has been challenged by COVID since its beginning. At first, we managed to stay on schedule with trash and recycling from March until early June. Beginning in mid-May and continuing into June, there were several positive cases of COVID-19 at our Foley's Lane East Side sanitation yard. This led to shutting down the yard for a period of three weeks so all the workers there could self-isolate. This also resulted in a temporary suspension of recycling collection. We opened everything back up the week of July 4th, but we've struggled with staffing levels since then. When routine services are low on employees, we end up having to rely on employees from our other operations. What we found was because trash collection is so very labor-intensive and employees who don't usually do that work aren't accustomed to it, it takes them longer and there's more mistakes. The success of a curbside trash and recycling collection route depends a great deal on the crews and the driver familiarity with the layout of the route and the details of each block as well as the households on the route. The substitute drivers, laborers, supervisors from the other operations were unfamiliar with the routes, and the vehicles lacked GPS in the vehicles, so it was difficult for them to navigate the routes, you know, using turn-by-turn instructions to ensure that they didn't miss locations. Many of the supervisors that could help problem-solve these issues were themselves in isolation. In fact, at one point, we had all of our East Side supervisors in isolation because of COVID. In addition, we saw an increase in trash tonnage substantially since the shelter-in-place order has been in place, and this adds to the overall time it takes to perform collections. When a collection vehicle is full, the crew must travel to dump it at the Quarantine Road landfill or the Northwest Transfer Facility, and then they return to that route. So our routes are designed for generally a 10-hour workday, and they were lasting in excess of 14 hours. So city services were equally provided based on 3-1-1 requests. All communities were impacted by these delays. However, some of the neighborhoods that we experienced, they had layouts that made them a bit more difficult. Some neighborhoods had narrow alleys, and they required alley collection, and others have unique layouts with different roads and one-way streets and all. That some of our drivers who were unfamiliar with the neighborhoods, we found that they got confused, that they made wrong turns, that they missed entire blocks because they just didn't know the area. We have a commitment to equity, and we take it seriously. We really do work hard to avoid any disparities in service. We put many precautions in place to keep our employees safe by providing adequate personal protective equipment. We're enforcing all social distancing requirements and keeping ourselves informed about best practices with the CDC and the Health Department. And we're sharing information with employees as we get it. We're providing employees with masks, gloves, hand sanitizer, and other PPE. We're sanitizing our yards and our trucks each and every day. We are practicing social distancing and enforcing it when employees are at work and throughout the day. And then employees have been provided with laundry service for their uniforms, so potentially contaminated clothing is not brought home to further contaminate or potentially cause other family members to get ill. Staffing is at the core of our current challenges, but we're taking some steps to address this. There's going to be a virtual job fair on Facebook Live tomorrow at 1:00 PM. We're working to recruit seasonal maintenance aides very quickly while we work also fill permanent positions. Additionally, we have been working for some time on contracting with private haulers for assistance. We are under emergency approval to procure these contractors for trash and recycling immediately without having to go through competitive bidding. But we've seen many of these vendors, it's been difficult, let me say, to get some of these vendors on board because they're experiencing the same issues we are with the shortages, the fear, some of the concerns, and just the nature of our routes and the specific requirements that they go up and down alleys, which require smaller vehicles, has just proven risky and too challenging for some of these vendors. We do have a contractor, Goody Companies. They started work today. This was their first day, and they are taking eight routes. That's eight routes per week, so that is very helpful. And we're looking to expand contractor support as much as we can, but right now, there's just been very little interest in all of that. Concurrently with all of this, we entered into a one-year contract for routing software for trash and recycling vehicles, and that will provide turn-by-turn directions for crews that will help to optimize our routes. The kickoff call with the routing company was held last week, and we're excited to move forward with this. We really are. We'll be able to right-size and optimize our routes. And this will allow our crews to complete new routes without confusion, and it allows for resilience. That is critical. Resilience is critical as the city prepares for future COVID-19 potential issues, certainly if there's a surge or any other issue that could come from it. As part of this continuity service plan, we wanted to prioritize trash collections because there is a very clear public health and safety ramification from trash that is uncollected. But we also knew that we need to continue to emphasize waste diversion and recycling and keep an option available for residents who really do go out of their way and really do prioritize recycling. So on August 31st, we opened community collection centers in each of the 14 city council districts, temporarily replacing the curbside recycling collection. As promised, we reassessed these locations after two weeks, and we identified some improvements. There were two underutilized locations that were moved and changed. We added an additional location because of the demand, and we expanded hours. So now, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, all the collection hours throughout the city will be 7:00 AM through 6:00 PM. The centers are open Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays still from 7:00 to 3:00. The Citizens Convenience Center hours will remain unchanged. So those Sisson Street and Quarantine Road and landfill, Northwest Transfer Station. In addition, we're working to further publicize these locations and the hours, and we appreciate everyone's support during these challenging times. I'd like to ask the Bureau Head for Solid Waste, Mr. John Chalmers, to discuss some of the details in our staffing and operational challenges. So I'm going to ask John to speak to that.
Good afternoon, Council President, Chairman Boach, and Vice Chair Schleifer. Before I get started, could you guys, could you grant Kristin Oldendorf access to provide some slides for us?
Absolutely, let's work on that.
Appreciate it. So as the Acting Director explained, we have been hit on all sides from COVID. Operations were already struggling. The added challenges of increased tonnage, increased callouts, the heat, and the routing issues have combined to bring operations to nearly a breaking point. The pre-existing challenges we are dealing with made us less resilient in the face of these new challenges. You can see from the photographs, if she's up here, do you have the, Kristin? I'm sorry, is Kristin on yet? Chairman?
Yeah, she's on here, we're working on getting.
So Kristin, I'll let you get back, then you can show those slides. So I know, we want to show you some slides that really clearly identify the challenges that we are faced with each day as we try to collect curbside collection. Many times, the crews need to actually clean the alleys before providing curbside collection. We have been collecting an increased amount of materials with fewer people. To put things in perspective, I'd like to share some numbers with you. So in January of 2020, Routine Services had 345 total employees. This number included admin staff, supervisors, and crews. In August of 2020, Routine Services employed a total of 285 employees. That means since January, 60 employees have left Routine Services Division. Of the employees that stayed with the Bureau, on average, 113 employees did not report to work in the month of August. In an already short-staffed division, approximately 34% of Routine Services workforce did not work in the month of August. There are not enough full-time positions to adequately staff the operations, so we end up leaning on SMAs. SMAs are seasonal maintenance aides, temporary employee positions. And they're not attracting or retaining employees. The nature of this work requires a special person who can handle the physical demands of the work and the elements. It can take time and experience to get used to this work. Unfortunately, we also have an aging workforce issue. And though we continue to hire, once someone gets hired, the lengthy hiring process, they do not always stay. Now, I'll give you a great example that happened last week. We hired an employee who started last week. He showed up for the first day. The second day was a no-call, no-show. The third day, the employee worked four hours and then quit. The challenges of this type of work have been exacerbated under the pandemic. The anxiety of COVID alone with the demands of working with masks on and the heat has really put a strain on our workers. This is not unique to Baltimore. Collection issues have been common across the country since the start of COVID. I had a recent conversation with the folks in Philly, and they share the same challenges as we do. Some other jurisdictions have even stopped recycling altogether. These challenges will likely remain throughout the pandemic as tonnage will remain high. Employees will still be hesitant to work in trash collection. Vendors we have spoken to have said that the length of the routes and tonnage we collect are more than they are normally servicing. One vendor said that they normally service around 800 to 900 units per route. While Baltimore City trash routes, we have about 1,000 to 1,100 units per route. Another vendor we spoke to said they might have to bring additional crews on board to service around. We're now focusing on staffing up Routine Services. We can't keep pulling from the other services, or those services won't be able to stand up. We're very hopeful that with the help of the contractors, we're able to hire, along with filling positions, operations will be in a much stronger place. I want to thank you for allowing me to present this to you, and now available to take any questions that you may have.
John, this is Marsha. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, Kristin still couldn't share the screen. We sent the presentation to Matt Stegman.
Yes, we're working on it now, Matt and Chambers. We're working, I know we attempted to make someone else to host, and it looks like John Chalmers has made a host, so we're trying to switch it back so if we're able to do that, Mr. Chalmers will work that again.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to spend a couple minutes just going through the slides so you can see some of the photos and the graph, if you might.
Yeah, I like to add that I think it's very important that you take a look at the slides. They're really telling on some of the challenges.
It looks like we're up, so Kristin's up now, so we can see the screen.
That's great, thank you so much for your forbearance, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, of course, thank you.
John, do you want to go ahead and explain what they're seeing in each?
Yeah, so this here is the timeline when the state of emergency started to when we actually had to put in place the Solid Waste Continuity Service Plan. This walks you through the timeline.
Okay, I guess, next slide.
So this slide here, this indicates where we have the drop-off centers for the recycling program. We looked at, we tried to make sure we got one in every council district. We're getting some mixed feedback on this. A lot of folks like it. We understand this is not a one-size-fits-all. We are looking at the numbers, and we're making adjustments along the way when resources are available.
I want to add one quick point, because you know, the District Represent, the Ninth, also had a change there, and I understand why it happened. I know it's kind of based on numbers, but it also makes you think, from a long-range point of view, how we try to up the recycling participation in the city, because I know there's a greater demand in some areas versus others. So I know that's not our immediate concern, but it's something that we should be thinking about long-term, too.
I agree with you, old Hollywood, that is correct.
But yeah, please proceed, thank you.
So this is a photograph of the West Northern Parkway location located at the Police Academy on Northern Parkway and Park Heights. This is one of the drop-off centers. This is the Greenspring Middle School, which is on the lower parking lot, 4701 Greenspring. This is one of the popular locations. This is the Warwick Avenue location. I think this is the one we're just talking about. You can see there's very little participation at this one at this time. This is an overall breakdown of the tonnage we collected over the last two weeks and the visitors' participation. So this is what I referenced too early in my presentation, some of the challenges that we face as we go in and we're performing curbside collections. The job in itself is already labor-intensive, and when you add a level of cleaning up the alleyways before you actually begin to start servicing the trash routes, you know, bending over, picking up, you know, bags that are illegally dumped, tires that are illegally dumped, this is what extends the day and brings the stress and pressure on that operation. So these are the staffing levels since the beginning of March through August. To put these numbers in perspective, each day, we require about 216 employees to get Routine Services bullied, operational, and up and running. And as you can see across the board here, we met that goal in April and May, and after that, it's just been a downhill battle. So here we have a chart. This illustrates the tonnage collected. If you look back at between February 29th and March 13th, you'll see that there was an uptick in tonnage. There's another drop, a slight drop back in March 28th to April 10th, but then it took off. Normally, in a two-week period, we pick up anywhere from 5,000 to 5,500 tons of waste. As you can see, we went way beyond that. So when you look at the spike between March 28th and April 10th, that's almost a 40% spike. As you can see, it came down somewhat, but there's still a spike in tonnage. We're collecting about 30% more tonnage than normally. These routes were designed for 10-hour days, and again, this just illustrates one of the challenges that we face every day.
Are there still slides, or is that the last one?
Kristin? No, this is the last slide, she's trying to disconnect now.
Okay, okay.
She couldn't unmute.
Understood, well, that's very helpful. All right, and then, Mr. Chalmers, if you can give the host key back to Larry Green, also known as Richard. If you can figure out, that's fine, we'll figure it out. But then also, I know there may be questions, but I do want to allow DPW to get through the presentation. If there are any other points you'd like to make, I know that I'll have some questions, but I'm certain that there are other members of the committee and members of the public who may have questions.
That's it from us, Council Chair.
Okay, well, again, I appreciate that. There are a couple, you know, things that come up. I mean, one, you know, a couple of points I made, no, I was making from before. One was around the GPS system and the vehicles and having a navigating software. I know we can't, you know, go back in the past, but I know one of our issues with the city is technology, and some might question, you know, why we didn't have that before. But clearly, you know, we're trying to move forward. So what's the timing in terms of that being fully up and operational? I know you mentioned, or was mentioned before, that that was something that was coming on board, but when do we look at that being fully operational?
So I'm pleased to report that we just signed off with the contract on August 26th. And I can take you through the entire timeline, but to answer your question, we'll be done with training, installation, and be ready to implement this program between November 12th and November 20th.
Okay.
So we're moving forward, yes.
Okay, and then one other question, it's a huge question, to be honest with you. It has to do with our drop-off centers. Now, you know, there are some of us who are very fortunate that we have, you know, private vehicles and we're able to transport that recycling. But can you talk a little bit about any assistance or any ways we're going to work through those who don't have the means to get their materials to those centers, or any thoughts around that?
Yeah, I do know that since the beginning of all of this and the fact that we had to modify recycling, there were a lot of neighbors that were reaching out and helping one another. It was great. I would encourage folks to continue to do that. We are looking at other means, maybe, you know, looking at, you know, augmenting that service some way with small haulers, but we haven't finalized that yet. But I would encourage folks to work together. This is a time when we all need to work together. And at the end of the day, if that doesn't work, residents can just place their recyclables out with their trash, and we'll pick it up. You know, that breaks my heart if that's the end result. But again, we're dealing with a pandemic, we're dealing with limited resources across the board. We are continuing to look for, you know, solutions, and I welcome any solutions. But that's where we are today as a city. I hope I answered your question.
You did to some degree, and then one other, you know, follow-up, and then I'll also open up for members of the committee to ask some of these questions. But you also mentioned, you know, contracting, some of the small haulers. Can you talk a little bit about what that looks like? I know that's been a question that's come up in the past, but, you know, any requirement you have in terms of those haulers, how you're selecting them, and how many we may be talking about? If you could just give a little bit more substance on that.
All right, I tell you, Council Chair. I'm sorry, I thought I heard somebody jump in. We are actively looking at that. It is a complex, it's a complex solution to bring on small haulers. It's a complex solution to bring on small haulers, but we are looking at it. One, you have to be a licensed small hauler. You have to be licensed through the Health Department. But we haven't finalized what that, how that structure is going to be. But that's something that's on the table. Right now, trying to get through bringing on some drivers and labors, we're working with a contractor, Harrington, to bring on 20 drivers and 25 labors. If we're able to do that, then we could stand up services sooner than later. So that's the immediate focus. We are working with individual groups throughout the city that have offered to step up and help us clean up the city. I had a phone conversation with Council President last night to this effect, that he's going to be out there again this Saturday working. Working with a couple of groups along those lines to bring about some relief to services. But we're still working on that.
Okay, that's helpful. And interesting enough, you mentioned, you know, Council President. I know the Council President also has a few questions as well. So Council President Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Chalmers and Director Garbar for the presentation. I want to start where we just ended. Mr. Chalmers, can you talk to me about the struggles to get contractors interested in helping out with solid waste? When I'm thinking about some of the folks, we know that our Harrington has stepped up, but many of the other, especially our MBEs in Baltimore City, our black owned businesses in Baltimore City, who may be able to help in some sense. And what has been either, from your perspective, what has been the missing points where we're not connecting? And also, what are the difficulties that you're having in actually trying to get folks interested in doing this work?
A very good question. We're dealing with waste. We're dealing with trash. So you have to have the right tools to manage that. You need a vehicle that can handle, you know, about eight to 10 tons of trash. Now, we service 210,000 households Tuesday through Friday. And again, you just can't have a pickup truck or an open body truck and go through the alley and start, you know, throwing trash on the truck. We're going to be asking folks to, you know, to physically manually handle this material. So the biggest challenge with small haulers is making sure that they have the equipment to efficiently and safely navigate the alleys and handle the waste. And to piggyback on that, when we're talking to the large haulers, one of the issues that they face is that, you know, the vehicles that they use are 25 cubic yard dump trucks and bigger, low packers and larger. We currently use 16 to 20 cubic yard dump trucks and I'm sorry, low packers. And our 20 cubic yard low packers, some of those alleys, we can't navigate with those vehicles. So it boils down to just having, you know, the right equipment, the right personnel, and being able to navigate Baltimore City's unique, small nine and a half foot alleys.
Thank you, Mr. Chalmers. And to that point, right, for folks who they may be watching and listening today, who they might not have the packers or the truck size to get down the alley, but they may have, you know, access to dump trucks, et cetera. I'm assuming the answer is yes, but I have to ask you, you're very open to those individuals being able to help you in other ways by maybe even just having those trucks and location for your guys to put things on there that will cut down on their time running back and forth. You're open to that kind of partnership as well, correct?
That is, yes, I am very open to that partnership. I'm open to any partnerships. There's no, there's no idea that we should not at this point explore. So anybody that's willing to sit down and share their thoughts, you know, we welcome that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. My second, my second question, actually, you know, this morning, I actually went out and visited several of the recycling sites and the folks have been great. They've been out there. They were right there on time and ready to work this morning. And so I saw a good piece of people come in. The one thing I do want to, to ask though about the ability for us to have more signage placed at some of the centers. For example, I went to the Warwick Avenue location, which I knew where it was just because, you know, I spend a little bit of free time that I have driving around the city and know where that school is. But some of the locations being a little bit off the beating path, how can we get more signs out to the crews so that they can put them in place that pushes people to where they are, especially knowing that some of them are not going to be right on main roads?
Yeah, we're actively working on that. Working on that. That actually came up in our conversation on our daily call with Acting Director Matt Garbar. We're printing up signs and we're going to get signs out to all of our locations.
So, yeah, I can just add, we did have for the first week or so was in particular up in the old Police Academy, it said that it was right there off of Northern Parkway. But the physical location was actually on the other side on Manhattan Avenue. We actually got a call from the fire department saying their dumpster was getting filled. So what we've done is we have made signage. We are going to be placing them that tells people more specifically where to go. And also, we found out that this is a great opportunity also to educate folks on just other things like COVID and all. We're going to put some COVID awareness signs up as well as some, we're going to use our materials for how to recycle properly, what to put in there, what not to put in there. And we're going to try to use these locations to the extent we can as an educational tool to help get more messaging out to the public.
Yeah. And Matt, I'd just like to add, if my memory serves me well, as part of that conversation, we also upgraded the map on our webpage that would show you exactly within that location where the can or where the truck is actually stationed. I'll circle back to you on that, but that was also part of this conversation because we heard this complaint quite enough.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. And for the record, I put the signs up at the Northwest facility today. So I think they're in a good place, but if they're not, you can blame it on me and not the worker that was there this morning. I wanted to follow up to your point, Director, I mean, Mr. Chalmers, about the frequency and the partnership around where dumpsters, another thing, because Director Garbar, you noted that there's been an increase in trash collection, you know, and so did Director, Mr. Chalmers. What, if anything, have you guys done or considered to alleviate the frequency of the stops to unload the trucks? Like partnering with other folks and even our folks to put roll offs and things at midpoints of routes? Or how have we thought about that in a way to help our workers out and to help out with the time issue?
Yes. So, you know, we're collecting waste with the low packers and it's a little difficult when you're trying to offload a low packer in the community. You've got to be very, very careful. Again, you know, we're talking about decaying waste. And, you know, once you get it on that truck, you want to be in a safe place. So it would be nice to have a Northeast Transfer Station. Unfortunately, we don't have one right now. That's something that, you know, we're looking at, you know, going down the road. But we send as many vehicles as we can to the Northwest Transfer Station to offload. But those are some of the ideas that we tossed around. But again, when you're managing waste, it's a complex operation. It's just not straightforward, you know? So you got to be careful with some of the things that you do with it and where you do that. There are, you know, there are state laws that we have to make sure that we're, you know, we adhere to. So when you start unloading a low packer with eight to 10 tons of debris, you know, you just can't change how you do business in the city without making sure you're following all the best practices and you're following state law.
Mr. President, one thing we have looked at, and I think going to get to this point at some point, but we really haven't, we don't want to do this, but consider where trash collection occurs. In some neighborhoods, it might make sense to change the collection from the alley to the front of the residence, which doesn't require as much backing up or maneuvering and could be collected a bit faster. That's going to be a significant, yes, sir.
And that would also, Mr. Director, help out with the size of the trucks in the alley as well, correct?
Absolutely. And that would be locations where private contractors would then be able to, to collect. But we know people have been putting, many people have been putting the trash out in the alleys, you know, forever. And it'll probably be a somewhat high bar for, you know, getting people to do it a different way. And there'd be issues also how the trash can would then get around and have to be taken outside or through the house. But one thing that would make collections faster.
Yeah. And I'd just like to piggyback on that. At some point, that's not going to be an option. Because right now, the industry, they're not making 16 cubic yard trucks. They're very hard to come by. Not a lot of cities are ordering the smaller trucks, especially the private sector. The private sector wants to have a bigger truck because the more they can get on a route, it's more efficient for them. So at some point in time, this is a conversation we're going to have because we're going to have to switch gears and start, you know, talking about switching from a rear collection to a front collection.
Okay. Thank you for that. I have a couple, like, kind of rapid fire question for you guys. Can you walk us through the exact kind of PPE the workers are given, you know, besides gloves and masks, talking about clothing? Do they have access to showers and things like that as well?
Matt, you want me to take that? Okay. So we provide the employees each and every day with, of course, their gloves, sanitized wipes, their N95 mask. We're constantly cleaning the facilities on a daily basis. We provide uniforms. I think they have five uniforms. We're providing laundry service. We provide boots. And we provide a locker room. There are showers at not all of the facilities, but one of the facilities. This, these are, and that's a great, that's a great question. These are some of the challenges that we've been faced with, you know, over time. There's been no true investment in solid waste. It's infrastructure, technology. And again, we get hit with this pandemic and now everything's uncovered. Because here we are, we're trying to stand up an operation and we had to make some decisions based on the resources that we have available. It would be nice to have the technology and the vehicles turn by turn solution. That would have, that would have mitigated one of the problems from the onset. You know, you get a new driver, you put him in a vehicle, here's your route, build and work. But when you have folks that were untrained, not physically prepared to do the labor intense work that the curb sock collection crews do, it made, it made, it made things worse. So that is a great question. We've been asking for money every year in CIP. I think with this past year, we've gotten $500,000 to work with. But again, great question. All of our facilities, we need to, we need to invest. We need to upgrade. So the men and women, when they come to work, they feel proud to come to work. They want to do the work that we need them to do. It's a labor intense job. So, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And I promise, Mr. Chair, I'm almost done. I just have two more really quick things. One, Director Garbar, can we put a notice in the water bills that are going out now about the recycling locations and the other things that are going on? So that we're making sure that everyone knows where they are for those who don't have the internet or access to email and things like that?
That's a terrific idea. Yes, we can. We'll do it immediately.
Thank you. And then also, like, we talked to your point, Mr. Chalmers, you just made about GPS and these things. And we know, in your response to the letter I wrote you, you talked about the collection and supervisors, not known as geographic, geography of the entire city. GPS, what can be done to deal with that? We know when the software is going to be in place, but what things you guys are doing, how you're doing that right now? And like, have you considered like how you can do things to ensure that this kind of large shutdown doesn't happen again? Have we now, are we at the point where we're thinking about contingencies? Because things like this may continue to happen over time. And then even have you guys considered like having them work and gather in the smaller groups, stagger shift, you know, collect the check ins to alleviate the burden of having to shut down the entire facility?
I hope I can remember all 10 of those questions you just hit me with. So I'm going to try jumping.
I'll repeat them.
So, so to respond to the question, have we thought about staggering shifts and making sure that, you know, we do what's best for the employees? We have, and we talk about this all the time. Solid waste collection is unique. It requires, and like we talked about early on, we don't have the turn by turn solution yet. So it requires a driver and two labors and it requires folks to know those routes. Right now, we're using paper routes. So what we, what we do now, we, there's a supervisor assigned to a set group of routes. There's a set group of employees assigned to a set group of routes. That ensures that, you know, we have at least somebody on that vehicle that knows where that truck is going when we have the call outs in the morning. We got to try to figure this out. Right now, we show short staffed and that revolving door of employees coming and going. That's, that's when, you know, a lot of residents are getting, you know, upset that their trash is missed. And I want to be able to provide them with that, you know, reasonable service that, you know, we say we're coming. If we have crews on the street, then they shouldn't have to go through that. But that's one of the reasons why it's so difficult to stagger the shifts. Now, we do have safety measures in place. When employees report to work, they have to stagger in the building. When they use the biometric clock and they sign in, we make sure it's wiped down after each time. We make sure that the vehicles are sanitized each and every day, twice a day in the morning and in the afternoon. So those are some of the things we're working with. But again, hallelujah. We have Rubicon Solutions and we're going to have that on board real soon. I know I've been talking to you since a year and a half ago about this. We finally have it. So I know that's one of your questions. And if you can, the next question.
Yeah, actually, actually, you got them all except for one.
Okay.
Guys, I know we're in the midst of this, oh, well, like, what steps are we taking? What planning are we taking in addition to the ones that you mentioned? To try to ensure that we don't have to have like another massive shutdown moving forward?
So again, you know, lessons learned from the shutdown at the Eastern District. There are no more indoor meetings. There's segregation of office staff and employees. If you come into the building, you must have a mask on. We have high level managers going out making spot checks. We're reiterating that throughout daily staff meetings. While we're providing, you know, we just, you know, keep reinforcing that. And I got to tell you, it's difficult for, and I get this complaint all the time from residents. They call in and they say, you know what? I saw your workers. If you guys are trying to do the right thing and not have services fall, these workers need to have their mask on. And I say, you know what? You're right. But sometimes when it's 95 degrees outside, it's like running a marathon with a face covering on. It's sometimes it's just difficult walking down the street. So we continue to reinforce that you must have a face covering. When you're inside the vehicle, there's no, there's no gray area. You must have the face covering on. If you're outside of the vehicle and you need to take a breather, then we allow for folks to do that. But it's a culture change. We got to keep, you know, reemphasizing that, reinforcing that message to make sure that our employees are following the best practices possible.
So, so to your question, Mr. President, that is all of our goals, that we don't have to have this happen again. We're trying to aggressively recruit as much as we can, as many people as we can. And we're trying to get as many contractors and other ways to support us so that we have an overabundance, excuse me, of workers who can step right in. I will say that some of the economic benefit in this city is actually going to hurt some of our recruiting attempts. I just, we just saw yesterday, I believe, Amazon is going to be hiring thousands of people. And that is amazing for the city, but they're able to pay more than the city can. So that is something that has inhibited us to a certain extent and something that we are going to be focusing on very clearly, especially with our seasonal maintenance aids to try to get pay and other benefits put in place so that we can actually get that and attract people to these jobs.
And Director, just to follow up to that, have you guys talked with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success and also African American Engagement and MOED and tried to engage their offices in helping to have some direct connections with hiring?
Yes, sir. We have talked to all of them. We've talked to anyone. We've talked to anyone who have people who are willing and interested. We get, we, there's no shortage of people who are interested. And John can correct me if I'm wrong. There's a significant issue with the drug and alcohol test with some of the people who apply. And then honestly, once people are in the job, we lose close to 80% within a week or so. It's a job where if people like it, they'll stay for 60 years. If it's not what someone wants, they don't, they don't last a week.
Okay, and can you also send that, the information for that Facebook Live to all of us on the council so that we can hear that?
Absolutely.
Say, Mr. President, again, yeah, thank you for your leadership on this and you asked a lot of questions that a lot of us had as well. So again, thank you for your leadership on that. Also want to go to Vice Chair Schleifer. I know that he had a number of questions, so Vice Chair Schleifer?
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Chair Schleifer? All right, again, once again, Vice Chair Schleifer. If not, we'll go to other members of the committee. Going once, going twice. Okay, Councilman Cohen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, President Scott, for the resolution. Thank you to Mr. Garbar and Mr. Chalmers and the whole staff. And again, do want to reiterate the point that the president made that we are truly grateful for the work of the folks on the trucks. And you never know how essential people really are until there's a global pandemic and we are literally relying on them. I wanted to talk about communication, which to my mind has been mixed. Do, of course, appreciate Mr. Chalmers, your willingness to always pick up the phone and problem solve. But we've heard from a number of residents across my district and I believe across the city that communication has not been great. First off, not everybody is online. So just having the city's website or the DPW website sort of toggling with updates isn't always adequate. Some of the updates have been inaccurate. But again, we have a whole set of folks who, for one reason or another, and this is related in some ways to the digital divide, aren't on the internet. And so there's been a lot of confusion about pickup. I've suggested leveraging community leaders, council people, figuring out different communication systems. Perhaps there could be something written, but it has been confusing. Second point on communications is we know that a number of our residents here in Baltimore, English is not a first language. And so again, wanting to support all of Baltimore and operating through a lens of equity means making sure we are providing updates in multiple languages, including but not limited to Spanish, and just making sure that we are getting communication out there as fast as possible. Because I think that most folks in Baltimore, I think, are pretty reasonable and understand that we're in this pandemic and understand that everybody on some level has to sacrifice and none of this is perfect and we didn't ask for any of it. But where I think folks have been incredibly frustrated is around communication. And again, I recognize that this is unprecedented and this is new for everyone. But my hope for this hearing was truly to see that our communication plans would improve because I think that's the least we owe to the people who are paying taxes to support city services is that we're at least honest, upfront, transparent and clear so that we don't have situations like I know we've all had in our districts where people are leaving out trash or recycling and finding out two days later that the recycler or trash day got picked up. So the question is, how are we working to improve communication moving forward?
Thank you for that question, Councilman. That's an excellent question. I'll be the first to admit that we have not always had the right communication strategy and we could have done better and we, we, we need to do better. And I completely agree with that. I think what we are going to be doing is, Council President mentioned, and we're going to be putting it in the water bills, the information on this, which is something that we'll get to every residential location in the city. We also are working with BSIT to use, right now, it's only for the emergency alerts, but there is a functionality for text messaging and automatic email alerts. But really text messaging, which can send critical messages out to people's phone numbers and email addresses. So we're looking to do that. We have really tried to rely on the media. They've been true partners in this. We've really tried to accommodate and work with them as much as they can because we know that that is a very effective tool for television and newsprint. And to your point on English as a second language, that's absolutely critical. We're working with the Mayor's Office of Immigration and Multicultural Affairs to ensure that our materials are translated and to ensure that we have access to the system and other places that can translate information if a resident or someone needs that information translated so that people can, can access our facilities, you know, regardless of their, you know, regardless of any potential language barriers. We, we are on social media quite a bit. We, unfortunately, there have been some things where there have been errors in it. That has not missed me, that frustrates me. I think we are, some of our folks are very aggressive in wanting to get information out and sometimes things need to be double checked. So I'm making sure that things are double and triple checked to make sure, as well as, we need to make sure that we put timestamps on stuff that's being tweeted to say sort of, you know, Tuesday at whatever time so that with social media, it might come back up later that it's a, something that's right now versus two days ago or something like that. John, do you want to mention anything else that your team is working on?
No, I'd just like to share, Councilman, and I share your frustration just to add to that, sometimes it's difficult sending out, you know, good information the first time, as I mentioned early on in my presentation. The goal is to staff all of the routes and get all the routes covered. But, you know, since the beginning of this pandemic, the buildup of trash, the buildup of recycling, the workforce being overwhelmed at some point. We may tell you that these set of routes are scheduled to be serviced today, but then, but then there are things that happen along the way that we fall short. So I get what you're saying because I lived through this with you, the many, many phone calls back and forth. I think we stayed on the phone upwards to midnight a few times trying to resolve some of these issues. So we are working on that, you know. We hear folks across the city loud and clear and I honestly believe that, you know, that's half of the battle. If you can get the information out there and get it as close as, you know, to perfect, you solve part of the problem. People were frustrated. You told me you were coming, you didn't show up. So yes, I, I, we hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, and I do appreciate, you know, your accept, your accessibility, Mr. Chalmers, that you do take those calls late at night. That definitely means a lot. Other point I wanted to make was, you know, one thing I think folks have appreciated is when we've been able to have dumpsters, like community dumpsters. I know that a number of our communities have wanted to do various dumpster days and increasingly so, just given the limited nature of the recycling sites, right? Like, we have a lot of folks who are not, who don't have a car and who, for whom mobility is a major challenge. And so the expectation that you're going to be able to get your trash, I'm sorry, your recycling, two and a half miles across a bunch of semi-dangerous roads if you don't have a vehicle, is unrealistic. So I wanted to just posit and ask for you all that we continue to honor community requests for dumpster days and recycling days and all the rest because I think it is very, very helpful to communities when we can at least say, look, on Saturday, the 25th, we are going to have a dumpster at this location. It's going to be there for such and such amount of time. It'll be in your community so you don't have to schlep your trash across, all the way across the district. So can we continue to do that and even increase the frequency at which we are providing dumpsters within communities and then making sure they actually get picked up?
Unfortunately, you know, again, everything relies on capacity. And we have these 14 sites throughout the city that's managed with the citizen drop off operation. That operation is also responsible for the five citizen drop off, drop off operations throughout the city. So, you know, just, we just, at this point in time, we don't have the capacity to add more dumpsters out in the community. Our community pitch in program is still well and alive. And if your community presidents want to use that time to, you know, use it for recycling, we can definitely work with you on that. And again, I am willing to work with folks across the city based on the available resources, but I can't commit to saying, you know, to you today that, yes, we could do that and, you know, we could manage four or five additional dumpsters in your community because I just don't have the capacity at this time.
Understood. I just think that we are going to need to take into account the fact that many people in our city don't have a car.
Absolutely.
Just having one dumpster in, within a district, within a district as large as mine or any of my colleagues is simply unacceptable and is not enough. You know, if you live multiple city blocks away, it's just too much of a burden. And again, folks are paying their taxes, they're contributing. They should have access to recycling like everybody else.
So I can tell you this, we're continuing to look at different strategies, different ways to, to, you know, augment services. You know, it's not like it's off the drawing board. You know, as new opportunities present themselves to us, we will deploy those opportunities. But again, I will ask, humbly ask that, you know, folks continue to do what I've seen them do across the city. And I think we got, you know, folks are driving up to, I was at 4701 Greenspring Avenue Drop Off Center. And here this guy comes in with his pickup truck where he picked up his neighbors recycling and, you know, some folks around the corner. I just, I just encourage folks to continue to do that. We're all in this together, working through this pandemic and we're doing our best we can with the limited resources that we have. So again, this is something that Matt and I, we talk about all the time. How can we get to those folks who, who have impediments at making it to one of the drop off centers? So again, it's on the table, it's something we're looking at. Hopefully, I can come back to you at some point in time and say, you know what, we found a solution to that. This is what we're going to do. So I, I hope I've answered your question, but I just want you to understand, I hear you loud and clear and I hear the folks across the city loud and clear. What we have in place is not a one size fits all. And that's not the end of, that's not the end of the program. That's not the end of us searching for different strategies and solutions. It's just where we are right now today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah, and thank you, Councilman Cohen. Next, we'll hear from Vice Chair Schleifer, followed by Councilman Dorsey. So Vice Chair Schleifer?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the DPW folks for indulging us and for being at this hearing. I do want to echo before I get into my questions what Councilman Cohen was saying about, you know, the overall messaging and communication to the citizens of Baltimore. It's really unfortunate, you know, how really non-existent it is when you look across the different agencies getting messaging out. You know, you guys brought up social media and some other things that are a simple way to communicate and the social media channel DPW. And anybody could say that DPW is probably one of the most essential agencies in the city. And your amount of following on social media is one of the least across the entire city. And just to put that in perspective, you know, you guys have about a little over 5,000 folks. Some of our other agencies have three to 40 times that amount. And so certainly, there's a lot of room for growth there and we need to be intentional about. Because what I find, and even with the council, doing that communicate, a lot of that communication work, including myself, I put together a video about recycling on the first day recycling. We had 10,000 views on it, but even with all of those efforts, putting out their recycling on recycling day, not realizing that it's canceled. And so there needs, there certainly needs to be a lot more work and intentional plan on how to get messaging out across the board and clear messaging. And to my, to my questions really are more around the specifics on, you know, on the staffing shortages. Because, you know, first off, I do want to say that, you know, Director Chalmers has done an incredible job based on all the challenges that are being thrown at him. He makes it, he makes it look easy. When everything is going wrong, he somehow finds a way to make things happen regardless. And so I want to thank him for his work. Without him being the glue holding this all together, we'd be in a lot worse condition than we're in. And I've, and I'm sure I already see some of my colleagues shaking their head echoing that sentiment. So certainly, we appreciate everything that Director Chalmers is doing citywide to manage this situation. What, and getting into my questions, this I've brought up multiple years in a row during the budget season. And so if you can just kind of remind me on a couple of figures, how much are the, are the labors behind the trucks making a year?
So, yeah, so the, the labor is, a permanent labor starts off around $16.90 an hour.
Okay.
Then we have our temporary workforce, laborers would start off at $11 an hour.
Okay, and how many of them do we have in total?
So I have 252 people assigned to curb side collection right now.
Well, not drivers, I'm talking about the laborers behind the truck.
So the laborers behind the truck, I got to get you that number. So let me put it this way, on any given day, we need about 216 employees to go out and work. So we need about 66 labors behind the truck.
Okay. And so, you know, I've said this year over year, and this is the year that this needs to change. These guys compensate greatly, not even in the slightest stretch of imagination. I can tell you firsthand, so the first round when recycling was having challenges, as many have seen, I went out there with volunteers from my district and we went with trailers and loading it up with recycling. I felt, I felt that I was out there probably the first day doing it for six hours. I felt that for like three days after. And so it's not easy work. No stretch. And so who determines how much these, these folks are being paid?
So let me make one correction. So there's 144 labors per day required to go out behind the trucks. The rate of pay is set by, I believe, DHR. There's a citywide rate that's set there, I believe.
And it is also subject to the collective bargaining agreements with the various unions.
That's true.
So, okay, so there's, so this is, these rates are negotiated? This $11 an hour and $16 an hour, somebody negotiated? Somebody negotiated that?
The, oh, you go ahead.
The $11 an hour is not, those seasonal maintenance aids are not actually represented by, so that was set by the city. The other rates are actually in the rate structure, and that's in the collective bargaining agreement. There's agreements on cost of living increases and other upgrades to that, but that is in the agreement and is negotiated.
Who, who negotiates that? Because, so you're saying somebody intentionally said, folks who go behind a garbage truck in the snow, in the extreme heat, and in all the circumstances you'll have on a day-to-day basis, somebody actually determined and said $16 an hour was appropriate?
I, I can't speak to that. I mean, it is negotiated with the Law Department and the Labor Commissioner's Office. We are not necessarily, I mean, we, we're involved in terms of operational capacity, but I can't speak to the actual determination for the rates.
Gotcha. So who, so who negotiates on behalf of these laborers? Who's the one who's saying what these laborers deserve?
John, is it the union?
So everything, so right, they go through this negotiation process, you know, whenever the contract is up for renewal. And I think that's part of that negotiation process, this is how we stop with the hourly wage, I believe.
Gotcha. Is there, is there a union in this hearing right now? Is that part of this? I mean, because I think somebody needs, is anybody who?
So, can you hear me?
Yeah, who's speaking?
Hi, this is Kimberly Humphrey from DHR. So I can, I believe that the negotiation is between Baltimore City and Ask Me Local 44.
Okay. Is, is that Local 44 on this hearing?
That would be Glenn Middleton, Councilman. That would be the, the union. I don't think that they're in this hearing, but I'm sure that you could reach out to them separately. But it would probably, for the purposes of an agency response, be better to get that from the Labor Commission than from Ask Me.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that, because what I'm gonna ask moving forward is that anybody who's actually at the table negotiating for these laborers spends, at the bare minimum, four hours working alongside these guys, like Councilman Burnett's done, and doing some of the work like I've done and some of our other colleagues. And to see that, by no stretch of imagination, should these folks be being paid that little? $11 an hour is a complete joke. That needs to be changed. There's no reason that we should not be immediately adjusting that to a bare minimum of $15 an hour for temporary work. Number two, those that are permanently making, permanently working on behalf of the city, they need to be paid way more than $16 an hour. This is not a $16 an hour job, working behind a smelly truck, putting in 10-hour days in 100-degree heat or zero-degree snow days. And so I know that we have categories in the ci, in the city based on different jobs. And I understand that we got to a point like that, but anybody who's negotiating a contract like this needs to be doing a better job of negotiating. There's no reason we can't get, we can't bump up both of these classes by a bare minimum of $4 an hour each. A permanent worker should not be being paid a penny under $20 an hour for this work. And a temporary employee should not be paid a penny under $15 an hour. And I think that if we made those adjustments, what we'd see is that in the long term, we'd actually be saving money. Because right now, the cost of not treating these people fairly and giving them the, the rates that they deserve is actually costing us far more than we're, than we'd be paying them. I mean, you can do the simple math and see what it would cost to make these rate increases. And what you'll find is that when we have to start hiring private contractors or doing other things to offset this, it comes out way more costly for us. And the fact that we have to have the turnover that we have on both the temporary and the permanent employees, like the example Director Chalmers gave, that, that needs to tell everybody involved that there's a big problem here, and that problem needs to be resolved. And so the person from HR who was on, I think it was Kim, what, what needs to happen in order to make that adjustment on the temporary? Because that's, that's within our control. And I'll, I'll send a message to the union that they need to negotiate better on their end. As far as the temporary employees, what do we have to do to bump that up to $15 an hour?
So I can follow up with you about that. I can also just share that there was recently an analysis of these classifications and, you know, grade, I'm sorry, I'm just looking, of, of the different classifications and codes and grades and pay, pay scales for each. There was a request to, you know, there was a finding that they were not in line with the local markets and a request, sorry, that, that they be upgraded. So. There is a chart that we submitted. I believe that Matt can get that to you.
Yeah, can, can that be a committee request that you send the committee that chart?
So, so yeah, take, yes, take a look at that. We will also be, you know, I, we will be looking into this further and say.
And who, who ultimately makes this final decision?
It is a, you know, it's a union negotiation.
I get that, I get that on the permanent, I'm talking about the temporary.
I'll have to follow up. I'm not sure.
Is that, is that a DPW? Does anybody know, Matt? Do you know if that, is that a DPW decision or is that an HR, a combined decision?
My understanding is DHR, I think, is my understanding.
Okay, but Director, are you, are you willing to put in a request to DHR to immediately bump that up so that we can start having this temporary be more competitive? And also use that as a filler to start filling these permanent positions? We have a great pool of temporary workers. Filling permanent ones will be a lot easier. So is that something that you, that you guys can get behind?
I'm happy to discuss it with Director Herbert and, and see if there's anything we can do.
Okay. Because I, I hope you guys understand, and I'm, I'm more than happy to discuss this further offline. But I can, you know, I'm just running the numbers in my head, and it's not even a calculation here. I mean, it's, it's night and day. The, the road you're heading down by not doing this is going to cost the city far more by comparison than you just immediately make this adjustment. And, you know, you mentioned Amazon as one example. Amazon will, you know, that, there's, there's really not a career path that people look at when they're in Amazon. They look at themselves as, hey, we're here, we're putting in our shifts, we're making, you know, we're making our, you know, covering our, our essentials. But if we can show people instantly that we just jumped by $4 an hour on temporary workers, we get them in there, and as soon as we can, fill them, move them up to permanent work, where they'll be making a minimum of $20 an hour, I think that that will show that we are competitive. And, and we wouldn't need to take things into account like Amazon, because we'd be competitive from the start. And also people would see a career path where they can, where they can certainly move up. So if you can also just report back to the committee in the next couple of days about conversations with, with Director Herbert, and let us know who, you know, if it's not, if it's not handled by then, who needs to be the decision-maker to immediately bump up those temporary employees?
Yes, Councilman, I'll, I'll get something back to you as soon as we can.
All right, thanks a lot. That's it, Chair.
All right, thank you, Vice Chair Schleifer. I know Councilman Dorsey has a question, but I know also that Councilmember Sne has a question, given her position as a Labor Committee Chair. So go quickly to Councilwoman Sne as a follow-up, and then go to Councilman Dorsey, Councilwoman Sne.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that most of our, and I think in, someone from DPW can tell me if I'm right, most of our employees from DPW as well are Baltimore City residents. If somebody can fact-check that fully fast and give us a what percent of the employees are Baltimore City residents? Because you're saying the right thing, Councilman Schleifer. When we support our employees, like making sure they have good pay, morale goes up, Baltimore City gets better services. And the other thing I wanted to piggyback off of the council president, when you said they'll have uniforms and boots, should we be seeing that now on the ground when they come through our community?
Well, yes, if it's a, if it's not a new employee, because it takes time for us to, you know, fit new employees, you may not see them in their gear, but for the most part, our permanent employees that have been here for a while, you should see them in uniforms.
Thank you.
And there is a difference between their summer, what they wear during the summer and what they wear during the winter. Summer is the, the orange t-shirt. We, we do provide them boots. The issue has been recently with COVID, how to maintain distance. What we have worked out, something with Granger boots, where they're going to come to a physical location during the week, and we're going to be able to have our employees schedule times for them to individually get measured out in the open air to get their new boots. But that is definitely something that is guaranteed to them, as well as the, the uniforms.
Thank you for the question and the answer, and then also thank you to Councilmember Dorsey for your patience. Councilmember Dorsey, please answer your questions.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Hey, John, I saw your diagram. You talked about the increased tonnage in collection. What's our normal recycling tonnage?
So normally we collect on a bi-weekly basis upwards of 1,000 tons of recycling.
On a, you said on a bi-weekly basis?
Bi-weekly basis, curbside, curbside, yes, 1,000 tons.
Isn't that about the same amount of the increase that we've seen in trash collection? Isn't that, that's like, that's like half of the increase that we've seen on trash collection?
So in, so in trash collection, we normally collect on a bi-weekly basis anywhere from 5,000 to 5,500 tons of waste. Here, here recently, we've, we've peaked as high as 7,000 tons in a bi-weekly period.
All right, so normally we pick up 1,000 tons of recycling on a bi-weekly basis. But since we've stopped collecting recycling, we're seeing, well, it's, it's hard for me to be clear about this, because the diagram in the, in the presentation only shows tonnage from January through the end of May. Where are we at now?
So I can provide you with that information, Councilman. So we just recently suspended or modified recycling. So what I wanted to illustrate in that chart was the, the increase in curbside collection since the stay-at-home order went into place. There's been a gradual uptick in curbside collection. But I can provide you with the recycling numbers as well.
Yeah, so here's my, my thing is, is I know that we've seen, you know, a lot, maybe, you know, there's got to be some impact to like people spending more time at home, and I know that's the real thing. People are spending more time at home, so the household waste is going to be up, but business waste is maybe going to be down. Maybe that comes out in the wash, the two combined. But it seems like our, our solid waste collection has gone up more than our normal recycling collection would be. And so if we're, I, I mean, I would imagine that that just means we're making an equal number of trips to the landfill or transfer station as we would be if we were separately collecting trash and recycling. Is that not accurate?
Don't think I quite follow you, Councilman. So, so.
Let me put it this way, if we normally collect 5,000 tons of trash, separately collect 1,000 tons of recycling, that's a total of 6,000.
Correct.
But if we stop, go, if we stop collecting recycling and suddenly we're collecting 7,000 tons of trash, our total volume has gone up somehow beyond what we were collecting between trash and recycling separately. So there's no way we're making fewer trips to the dump or the landfill. We're making probably more trips to the dump or the landfill just to execute the routes that, that we're doing.
You're, you're, you're 100% correct. So these routes were designed for 10 hours a day. We're actually spending anywhere from 14 hours or longer, depending on, on what happened. For instance, you know, we, we suspended services when we had the storm coming in. We saw an uptick in tonnage. But to answer your question, you're right, we're making more trips. It requires more resources to keep up with the amount of tonnage that we're seeing curbside.
Are, are our recycling routes normally longer than our trash routes in terms of mileage?
Yes. To put things in perspective, we have a total of about 72 routes per day.
Is that for solid wa, is that for trash or is that for recycling?
So we have a total of 72 routes per day. And so, and 22, 22 of those routes are strictly for recycling. So the recycling crews cover more territory because of participation rates and the way that things were calculated when the one-plus-one program went, went into place. One of the things we're always struggling with, not having that technology to adjust routes and to get that, you know, real-time data to make real-time, you know, adjustments. So to answer your question, there's more mileage, there's more territory to cover with the recycling routes as opposed to the trash routes, based on the tonnage that we pick up on recycling and the tonnage that we pick up on mixed waste.
All right, so I feel like I'm getting a better sense here of what we're dealing with. I want to come back to kind of what Councilman Cohen was getting at, that, you know, it's good that we have these drop-off points, but it'd be better if there were more of them. And I want to kind of combine that with the question that I asked. I can't remember what it was. It, it might have been during the budget, the last budget. I asked specifically about the efficiency of trash collection, because I had traveled to another country last year where I saw what they do. And I've been to other countries, I've seen what they do. And I used the example of Japan, where there's like one collection place per, say, like, one block radius, right? For every, for, for, there's a, you know, there's a, for every one-block radius, you have a place where you collect, and then the next lot, one-block radius is another collection point. So you have far fewer collection stops than you do if you're doing curbside door-to-door-to-door. But more, so it becomes extremely, you know, much more efficient than curbside. But you're not so few that you're talking about, you know, one per council district. I'm just wondering if there's any, any way we can create a more efficient approach to this just in general? And if, if now isn't the time for us to be experimenting with that, right? All across the country, we're seeing cities that are using COVID as a time, as an opportunity to, to try things out that, you know, that we might not otherwise have tried out. And, and seeing, you know, positive results, where you go, actually, we should just stick with this. It just seems like there's a, there's a, there could be a really good opportunity for us to not just be doing one stationary drop-off place and, and having, you know, and, and actually have somebody out doing these routes. Again, if we're seeing 2,000 tons where we were only seeing 1,000 before, then we, the, the increased effort to collect that has got to justify some modified approach to some degree. to some degree.
Yeah, I just, the Councilman, thank, yes, you, you, you are hitting on an extremely important issue. This city has, this city has a over, I don't want to say over reliance. We have, our, our collections are not right sized. We know that many, many, many things that are thrown away in this city can and should be recycled. And it is drastically, not even close compared to the tonnage that we pick up in trash compared to recycling. We must rethink how we do things and dispose of our waste and divert, use or recycle more of our waste. I am, as is Mr. Chalmers, completely on board in doing anything that is out of the box to try and spur and, and, and create different ways of thinking about this stuff. We put out the, the Less Waste Better Baltimore Long Term Plan and we cannot, the future of waste management is not landfilling and trash collection. It must be divert waste and reusing and finding value for the waste to be used in a different way. We need everything from change our vehicles to changing and retraining our workforce.
Can I just jump back in here? Cause I, I, I know exactly what you're saying. It's, you know, I, I know this, we all know this. You know, I'm really asking a question here. I, I don't know if I'm phrasing it as a question, but I'm asking a question about the possibility of having a, a higher number of community based drop off locations that can be collected on a route instead of one stationary truck in so few locations as a means of more efficiency, efficiently collecting recycling in a way that also addresses the question about what we do for people who don't have cars, what we do for disabled, what we do for elderly people. I'm reminded that I ride my bike all around the city. Week after week after week, I commonly ride through half of the city's neighborhoods in one week. And there's, there's this old, this, there's this lady, she's probably got to be in her mid eighties. And I see her walking through Carroll Park at like nine o'clock in the morning, walking easily from one end of Carroll Park. She's definitely walking from one end of Carroll Park to the other. And she's carting behind her a wire basket kind of two wheeled cart with her weekly groceries in it. I've seen, I've seen the same package of Klondike buckets sticking out of that basket on more than one occasion, enough to know that this is a normal routine for her. And this is a small stature, older woman. And it's a reminder of how capable so many people are of taking just maybe one more step when, that we, than we commonly ask them to. But how if we ask them to take a bigger step, we're asking too much of them. Right now, we're asking too much of people to go to one of so few locations. But we could have a lot more people participating if we had a, 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 a greater number of locations. Again, they don't have to have a stationary truck sitting there all day with like three people just sitting there manning it or throwing stuff in when people show up. But like, we could have more locations and do a, a modified approach to route. If we adopted community based drop off locations where collection could be done instead of door to door at one spot in a community. And this is not uncommon in other places. This is like literally how the entire country of Japan collects, collects solid waste multiple days per week because they collect trash separate from plastic, from paper, from metal. They, they separate, they don't even do single stream. They separate all this stuff and they use one location for multiple days per week. And people are able to buy in and make this work.
Let me jump in really quickly. I appreciate Councilman Dorsey's question. So I, I guess to add on to that, I mean, now let's, let's take it, the conversation outside of COVID for right now. We understand we're in, in challenging times. But outside of that, what would be any limitations or obstacles to doing what Councilman Dorsey suggested in terms of these drop off centers?
So, okay, so I guess this, this would be for both trash and recycling or just recycling?
Let's keep with recycling for now. It's easier to deal with one maybe than the other.
Yeah. I mean, we, I, we have.
Recycling is a lot cleaner than trash.
Yeah. I mean, I have no problem with more areas. I mean, the limitation is just the, the staffing of them. Now, if we want to, and we've even talked about potential rotations of locations throughout the week. I'm more than happy to, to look into that and, and see what we can do. I mean, my only concern would be that that could cause confusion. But if you're talking about overall, just getting to a bigger picture of overall convenience centers and drop off locations, that's been something I've talked with Mr. Chalmers about. We, we both would very much appreciate that and like, we think that that could be a long term solution to some of the illegal dumping that we're seeing if it is just easier.
For clarification, I, because it sounds like I need to clarify what I'm actually saying here. I'm not talking about anything that needs to be staffed at all. What I know, what, what I've seen is places where you go into a community and say you've got a 20 foot by, a 30 foot by 20 foot space that people drop their stuff and that's where it gets collected from on a route. And there are, you know, there's one of these per one block radius in urban, suburban, rural, ex-urban communities. And it doesn't require additional staffing. I'm talking about maintaining a route based collection system with one stop per one block radius instead of 200 stops per one block radius.
So there's, there's a couple of things we got to look at. And again, like, you know, Director Garber said, we're looking at, we're looking at different ways of doing business. Our Less Waste Better Baltimore Plan speaks to, you know, many different options. What you're asking is, you know, we would have to have the equipment in place. We would have to have some type of compaction if we're talking about recycling. Recycling is pretty bulky and in order to really to, to manage it, we would have, have to have a, you know, maybe some type of compaction unit there on site. But one of the things I've seen through the city councilman is even without pitch in program. If there's nobody there to manage that the pitching, pitching trailer, it's abused. And one of the things we're going to run into if we put, if we stand up these recycling centers throughout the city and they're not properly managed, we're going to get, we're not going to get, we're going to get a product that's, that's worthless because it's going to be contaminated. Once that load is contaminated, it costs us more to deal with it. It's a great idea. I think one of the things Matt and I, we talk about all the time is having a mini recycling MRF in the city. This would be a location, uh, uh, many recycling MRFs would be stationed throughout the city and it's part of the Less Waste Better Baltimore Plan we talked about. But these, uh, locations would be staffed throughout the city. They would, they would create jobs for the city, for the local economy, uh, for the folks who live in, uh, those particular neighborhoods. But we're, we're, we're constantly thinking of ways of doing business differently. Right now, we're just dealing with trying to keep the lights on and staff up to manage what we have and what, and the way that we're managing, just so that you know, the way that we're managing the drop off, the, the mini drop off centers that we've set up, we're managing that with some of the sweeper operators that we have because we're at capacity. And then we're also staffing those locations with some of our restricted duty folks to make sure that those containers aren't contaminated. And we're using that as an opportunity to educate folks. One thing I noticed at the drop off centers throughout the city, folks are bringing us their recyclables in plastic bags. Well, plastic bags are not recyclable. You should never put your recycling material in a plastic bag. It jams up the MRF and it's just not recycling. One of the other things we got, we got, I'm quite sure you're aware of this, you know, we need to invest in diversion. We need to invest in just how can we divert as much waste as we possibly get? That is the key to changing the behavior of folks across the city. We got to educate them, we got to provide them with the means of recycling. But I get what you're saying. If we had the resources to set up more temporary recycling, uh, drop off locations to the city, we would. But at this point in time, we don't.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I, I'll actually just pass the last two questions I asked were the exact questions I had, I was going to put forth around the placement of additional pickup locations at the district level was primarily the thing I've heard most. But I, well, actually, the other, the other question I've gotten a lot from constituents and actually I, I do believe may be contributing to some of the illegal dumping is the suspension of bulk trash pickup. Is there an update that you can provide to Chalmers? That, on that, on the status of that, that service? I've had a number of constituents reach out about it, but I'm, I'm, I'm certain that the, the, and I get sort of the ending, why, why it's removed in the beginning, but is, is there, are, are there plans or discussions to, to bring that back?
Yes, we're, we're constantly looking at trying to reinstate bulk collection. I get that, I get that question all the time. Right now, we are offsetting the routine services, trash, trash collection service with those drivers that those personnel sell. Until we staff trash collection and recycling collection back up, you know, we're at a disadvantage. The, the good news is that there, there's hope. We're working with the contractor. We're looking to, it's looking to provide us with 20 drivers and 25 labors. If all goes well, we're running the negotiation stages right now. If that all goes well, we'll see some resemblance of bulk services returning. It may not be at 100%, but you know, we may be at a place where we can, you know, turn the switch back on and, and be, maybe be at 50%. But I can keep you posted on that. But that's, that's the main reason why those services are, aren't up and running right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to reiterate anything that's already been discussed ahead of me. Thank you.
Uh, uh, thank you, Councilman Burnett. And, and then one follow up, because Councilman Burnett makes a, makes a good point as relates to bulk trash. But I mean, one of the things that you and I have talked about, Mr. Chalmers, quite often has been around some of the dumping that happens, obviously, in some of our streets and alleys. How are, how are you, how are you and your workers addressing that? Because we know, uh, obviously you're, you're going through, um, different routes and these things are seen. I think one of the complaints that we get is that, you know, a, a truck came through, but they left this. And so how would they get back? So can you talk a little bit about that? I know it's slightly off topic, but it's still related to our, our issue in terms of, um, dealing with this crisis we're in.
Absolutely. So our property management, uh, operation is, is up and running. Right of way cleaning operation is up and running. We do have mechanical street sweeping, which is, uh, the, the sweeping, uh, gateways, major gateways throughout the city. So, and, and also SIU team is up and running. So if there is, you know, dumping or dirty alleys or things like that that need to be addressed, I encourage folks to continue to work, uh, continue to create those 311 service requests. There is a backlog. As you know, we, we suspended services for quite some time trying to make sure we put ourselves in a good place should we run into a problem with routine services. And unfortunately that did happen. So there is a backlog that we're working on. I am very optimistic that, um, we have about approximately right now, we have approximately 400 overdue dirty alley requests, I'm sorry, dirty street requests and about 800 dirty alley requests that we're working on right now to, uh, clear up that backlog. But I just want to reiterate that if you recall earlier this year, we, we totally wiped the backlog out. We, we cleaned it up. I was able to get a night's rest. And then COVID came knocking on our door. And here we are back again with the backlog. So we are working, uh, to actively clean up the backlog.
And then one other follow up question, and again, this is somewhat related, but again, slightly off. Again, we know that a lot of the dumping also happens in areas where we have, you know, some vacant lots, some areas of overgrowth. And I know that, um, you and your team were, were doing an excellent job early on in terms of the proactive mowing, in terms of city owned properties. We have many that are privately owned. Can you address that because those issues do want to be in related as well?
So, you know, we do the heavy lifting. We go out, we clean up. But we don't do the enforcement. So I can't speak to the enforcement piece where they are, what, you know, what, what's trending, what, what they're seeing. But I, you know, again, I have seen illegal dumping occurring in the same locations over and over again. Now I'll use this, uh, location as an example. Frontell Drive in between Windsor Mill and I believe it's Windsor Hill and Forest Park. Where the dumping, you know, we clean it up today, the dumping's back tomorrow. So I, I can't, you know, only thing I can tell you is that our crew's up and working. We are, we do, again, we do have a backlog. Um, and then the property management backlog, I think there are about three, 3,500 work orders that are overdue. But we're working to, uh, uh, clean those up. But that's where we are with that.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to add that we, we're working on an MOU with Rebecca Woods and the Environmental Control Board for being, being more beautiful to, um, lots from, some of the lots from us that we maintain. They have a great organization that is able to, to maintain lots at a very affordable rate and can do it quite effectively. And we're looking at, at really trying to, to formalize that process so that we can, um, you know, better focus our resources, uh, on, you know, other places rather than, you know, just on overall, all the, the lots in the city that we have to move.
Understood. And again, you know, thank you, you know, very much, you know, for your work. I know that there are, um, some, uh, members of the public who'd like to, um, ask questions or comments. So we're going to try to get to those folks. I believe everyone on the committee has already, um, asked their question. So I appreciate your indulgence just a little bit, just to be able to connect with some of our constituents and, uh, folks who have some, uh, some issues they'd like to address. So, um, let's try to go through that as quickly as possible.
Allison Blood. Allison Blood. Anna Montegna.
Hi, yes, I was wondering, um, especially with what, um, someone just mentioned about the plastic bags. Why is it Target and Walmart can set up recycling bins to bring those types of plastics back to the stores? And it's not just their shopping bags, it's any of those types of plastics. But Baltimore City can't collect those types of plastics. And also, why is it that the counties have managed to not have any interruptions in service, but we have? Like the underfunding of DPW seems to be a huge issue that was pre-COVID. There was a gentleman that attended a lot of the town halls during the primary for mayor from DPW that was trying to draw attention to the lack of understaffed, underpaid, underfunded, you know, under everything, not having the tools to do their job. And nobody seemed to be paying attention. So are, are we going to be able to use COVID as a way to fix, try and fix this issue overall? Or are we just going to keep saying contractors, 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 which wastes more money, spends more money and doesn't fix the problem? I mean, thank you all for your efforts and your hard work, but you know, what, what, why can't we collect the shopping bags? Why can't we be doing different things that will help these problems?
So it's, it's not. So it's not about.
Chalmers, I, I know, um, Councilman Dorsey tried to jump in. Do you have something you would add, uh, Councilman for Mr. Chalmers' jumpstart?
May I please respond to the first part of the question about plastic bags?
You have response, okay, okay. I'll, I'll jump in, but try to make it quick so we can get back to these calls too.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the city uses a rec. The city uses a recycling center in Elk Ridge, Maryland, that I had the proponent of visiting in February of this year, and I actually got to see how that operation works. Baltimore has single-stream recycling, which means everything is mixed in together and is all mechanically sorted at a facility. There is no manual sorting once it reaches a facility, and so anything that goes into a facility, anything that goes into our recycling collection vehicles is all sorted mechanically, and the machines that are used for that, I'm sure you can see some videos on YouTube of what those machines look like, but they simply can't handle having plastic bags put into them. It will completely immobilize their mechanics, they just can't be put in there. The whole plant needs to be shut down periodically just to remove plastic bags that people put into there. It literally entirely stops the operation of the recycling facility, and that's not unique to the facility that Baltimore City uses. And so it's really important that people not put that in there. The collections that we're talking about at grocery stores like Target, Walmart, Safeway, Giant, this is a specific program that collects those bags and only those bags, and they never go into a single-stream recycling operation like that. It's really, really important that those bags not go into recycling, and that's not unique to Baltimore, it's anywhere that has a single stream. I just am glad that you were able to jump in on that part of the question. It's up to you now.
Thank you, Councilman, Mr. Chalmers, please.
Well, there's nothing else for me to say, he said it all.
Saying that, that's really informative, but is there a way that Baltimore City could invest in getting one of those so that we could do something where we put the dust boat type of plastic bags?
Well, we would have to get a contract to support that, and I think that one of the reasons that the Walmarts and the big chain stores are providing that service is because they provide the bags, you know, in the first place. But we could do that if we were in a position to get a contract and set up, you know, a plastic bag recycling.
Okay, just because plastic bags are such a big problem, I mean, we see them in the trees, we see them in gutters, we see them in the-
Well, we try to, you know, my thing is that we try to discourage folks from using plastic bags in the first place. We want folks to, you know, use, you know, reusable bags. Again, that's just something, you know, we're going to push, would like to push out there, would just do away with the plastic bags altogether.
Which would be great, but the reality is people I don't think are going to stop using them, but-
They're not.
Point, and I'll shut up because I know there's other people that have questions, and you all have time and important things to do. But, you know, literacy is a big problem in Baltimore City. Maybe one of the things getting out there to people could be some type of flyer or something that goes door-to-door with pictures on it, that shows items that are recyclable with photos so people know what they can recycle.
Absolutely, absolutely. We actually have some of those, some of that information up at our drop-off centers throughout the city. But I agree with you.
And I'll just add that the question, ma'am, that you asked about why other counties don't have this problem, every county except Baltimore City relies on full contract support for their solid waste. Baltimore City is the only jurisdiction that uses city employees to pick up solid waste. I, for one, think it is a great value that we have. I think it is very cost-effective for the city to do that, and I think other places around the city, contract support, they may not have the issues we have, but they do pay, and some of those contracts are expensive.
Thank you for that information too, because I didn't know that, and I absolutely 100% agree, it's better to keep people employed, which is what we desperately need in this city too. But thank you all for the jobs that you do, it's tough, and thank you all.
And thank you, I do see, thank you for the question and the answer, I do see we had Allison Blood, if you have a question, we can unmute you, if not, we'll go to the next caller.
I'm all set, sorry about that.
Not a problem, okay, we'll go to the next caller.
I have no questions.
Okay. Brandon Duff. Okay, okay, we have calling user number six. Calling user, go ahead, please. Okay, call, calling user number nine, you'll hear two beeps. Go ahead, number nine.
Just listening, thank you.
Dan LaPirello, go ahead, please.
No question, thank you.
Elizabeth Janey. Elizabeth Janey, please. Let me go back and use a little bit. Okay, that should get it. Okay, Sharon Hunt.
No question.
Okay. Yvonne Moore.
No questions.
That appears to be everybody, Mr. Chair.
All right, well, look, again, we thank everyone who participated today, we thank you members of the public, thank you members of the council, but most certainly our representative DPW, we know that your work is not easy, especially given the time period that we find ourselves in. So again, thank you for your efforts and your work, please keep engaged with us, I know we're reaching out to you as time goes on to make sure that we address these issues on behalf of the residents of Baltimore City. So again, we really thank you for your service, we know you go beyond, things aren't perfect, nothing is, but again, we appreciate your service. And if there are no more questions from members of the committee, at this point, this committee will stand adjourned. So again, everyone be well, and we're all in this together, as we mentioned, so we can't go by ourselves, so people in the neighborhood have a responsibility, us as elected, this is our responsibility and our city agencies, but also want to thank our frontline members, we know it's not easy, and so for our residents, please be thankful for our frontline members and give them a little bit of appreciation too. So with that, we'll stand adjourned, I thank you all for your time today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Me and Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.